Like, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We don't have any items from the public, but can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
No move.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Today, we are going to interview three candidates for the interim service of the sheriff of Berkeley County. And I'd like to welcome everybody here today for that and for this meeting, and it's greatly appreciated that you've taken time out of your all's busy day, as well as members of the audience and in this inclement weather we've been having. So with that being said, the first candidate up is, applicant's name is Robert Blair. So come on up and we welcome you to this little meeting that we're having here today. And I'll give you a minute to open, if you have any opening remarks you'd like to say or do, we would give you that time right now.
Yes, sir. First off, I just, I want to sincerely thank each and every one of you all how you've handled this situation. It's, it's, I don't think, I can't remember a situation where the commission has had to step forward like this and make the tough decisions. And I've watched from afar, I've watched how you've handled this. And I want to sincerely thank each and every one of you all, regardless of how this goes, your professionalism and how you've handled yourselves, this could be commended, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Let's start off with the first question, and then we're going to go around the panel here. So we're, each have a chance to ask and get you to answer our questions. But why do you want to be the sheriff? And why should we consider you for this position?
I came to Berkeley County in 1989. I've been here pretty much the whole time I was gone to Tucker County for a brief period when I was promoted, my first promotion. And my wife and I, who's here with me, we decided when we married that we were going to establish strong reach here in the community. Our, our community involvement through our church, the community organizations is, is, is deep. And we've, we've raised all three of our children here. My two grandchildren were born in Berkeley County. Berkeley County is close to my heart. I'm a Southern West Virginia boy, but this is home. And I care a lot about the community. I care about these men in this agency. My career with West Virginia State Police spanned 25 years and five days, and 18 of those were in supervision, administration. I feel that I'm equipped to do the job. I'm actually excited to do the job. I tell people in a kind of funny way that I've been running from this for a long time. So I'm, I'm here to serve, and that's, that's my desire, serve my community.
Eddie?
Yes, sir. I think you retired as captain.
Yes, sir.
West Virginia State Police.
Yes, sir.
So Captain, what would you see as your major challenges moving forward? And how do you overcome it?
First and foremost, my challenge is to, if I'm appointed to this position, is to get to know my people, or our people. I want to correct myself. I always want to refer to our people. I don't ever want to, they're not mine, they're our, this is, this is a, an agency that's going to serve all of us. And I want to, I want to get to know our people. And obviously, over the last several years, we've seen how police departments across the country have been maligned and this defund the police crazy movement. And I don't see that as much here in this community. I see a lot of support for our law enforcement. And there's many challenges in law enforcement. You know, the sheriff's position has so many different, you have the tax side of it, you have the law enforcement side of it. And with that, you, you have, you have a lot of challenges. And I, I've always tried in my career to surround myself with people that are smarter, better than me, know, know things that maybe I don't know can challenge me and my decisions. I have, if I'm appointed this position, I have a commitment from an individual that will come alongside me. And I think you'll be very impressed with, with what he'll bring to the table. So I've done, I've reached out, I have mentors and friends that have grown up in law enforcement throughout the state. And I've reached out to several sheriffs, one in Greenbrier County, one in Hardy County. They're very, very close to me, and they pledge their support for me. So those are two that I would say that are smarter than me and know more than me. So I'm going to lean on them and, and learn, learn the position and do, do the best job that I can.
Thank you. What would you consider your, your strengths and your weaknesses?
Well, years ago, I went to a executive command school, and they did a personality study on leadership. And what I kind of graded out as, and I'm not saying this boastfully, I'm a perfectionist. I like to do things with excellence. And I think that, that's probably a strong point for me, and sometimes it's a weak point for me, if you understand. I have high expectations for people that work for me, but I also have grace for individuals that are out here working hard. And I like to call them mistakes of effort that, you know, if, if, if an individual's working hard and they make a mistake of effort, I don't mind dealing with that. It's the, it's the purposeful violation going outside the bounds that we all have guardrails and, and things that we, we should stay within. That's, that's the, that's the problem I see. But my, I, I'd have to say my, my strong point and weak point is, I like to see things done with excellence. And, but I'm also have the ability to give grace when maybe none of us are going to get to that excellent. Well, you always strive for it and do the best you can do.
Are you familiar with the civil service code that the sheriff's?
I am somewhat familiar with it. I've been reading up on it. Not as familiar as I'm going to be if I get this appointment, obviously. I understand that it's there as a protector for their employment. And it's something that I look forward to working with the three, I think it's three, civil service commissioners, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And it's a system that I don't, like I said, I was, came up in the state police, we have what was called professional standards and how they look, you know, how they looked into complaints and disciplinary matters. It's a whole different system. But I have no problem with working with that system and how it will operate.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Barnhart?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Under the West Virginia Code, the sheriff is more administrative officer than he is a rootin', tootin', gun-totin', shoot 'em up kind of Western guy. What do you feel, or how do you feel about the future of your other administrative offices? And you already mentioned this, the tax office, the police reserve, animal control, and conservatorship, and all those kinds of things that the sheriff has to get in that aren't part of rootin', tootin', gun-totin'.
Well, you're, you're definitely looking at a guy that's not a rootin', tootin', I did that in my younger years. Like I said, I spent the last 18 years of my career in some form of supervision or administrative management. I understand the, that the tax department is, is running very smoothly under Ms. Gooden's leadership. I look forward to working with her. The animal control, you know, you hear stories about, in the media about how things are going there. I, I can work with them and the conservatorships. I understand you have legal representation that handles most of that. So I look forward to learning that. It's something that would be a challenge for me, but I accept those challenges and look forward to it.
One thing that your predecessor was, I guess, very good at was getting grant money. He was, God, in here, half, half of our meetings, you know, getting grant money. Do you continue that? Or do you, do you find that useful? Or is it a burden to you?
Absolutely not. In the state police, we often, I personally, I don't write grants and never have.
Well, we write the grants for.
But I'm saying, I definitely would want to explore any grant that would be beneficial to, to the officers, to, to the efficient running of our department. Anything that's going to be beneficial to the citizens of Berkeley County, I'm for. The gentleman that I will have alongside me is, is well-versed in logistics, grant writing, budgets. Like I said, I like smart people around me. Yes, sir. I would, I would definitely do that.
Mr. Boyd?
If you were so selected for this position, what would be your first course of action after selection?
Well, the obvious thing, I've already kind of touched upon, is getting to know my people, or our people. I know many in the agency. In my career, I worked with a lot of sheriff's department employees on the task force, and, and I knew them. So getting to know my people and, and just starting to understand the, the different roles, identifying, you know, who's doing what, and if, if it's as smooth as it could be, or maybe, maybe we'll look at, you know, if there's any changes that need to be made. But I'm not going to go in and just upset the apple cart, so to speak. I want to go in and get a firm understanding of what's going on. I've watched this whole thing from afar. I hear things in the community. But I don't want to prejudge any, anybody or anyone. I want to go in with an understanding that, you know, I'm going to be new to this. And that, a lot of these, the deputies and civilians and people, they don't know me. They may think they do, but they, they don't know me. And I want them to get to know me. And I want to, I want that relational with, with each and every employee. And I think that's very important.
You said you've spent many years in the administration role. So with this next question, do you have much experience with team building, morale building?
In law enforcement, you better be able to team build and morale build. It's, it's one of the most unique professions in, in the world because there's a, there's a saying, nobody wants the police until they want the police. And, you know, that's, sounds kind of weird until you really think of it. Yeah, I'm, I'm all about team building, morale building.
And that's, that's my desire, serve my community.
Eddie?
Yes, sir, I think you retired as captain.
Yes, sir.
West Virginia State Police.
Yes, sir.
So Captain, what would you see as your major challenges moving forward and how do you overcome it?
First and foremost, my challenge is to, if I'm appointed to this position, is to get to know my people, or our people. I want to correct myself. I always want to refer to our people. I don't ever want to, they're not mine, they're our. This is, this is a, this is a, an agency that's going to serve all of us. And I want to, I want to get to know our people. And obviously, over the last several years, we've seen how police departments across the country have been maligned and this defund the police crazy movement. And I don't see that as much here in this community. I see a lot of support for our law enforcement. And there's many challenges in law enforcement. You know, the sheriff's position has so many different, you have the tax side of it, you have the law enforcement side of it. And with that, you, you have, you have a lot of challenges. And I, I've always tried in my career to surround myself with people that are smarter, better than me, know, know, know things that maybe I don't know can challenge me in my decisions. I have, if I'm appointed to this position, I have a commitment from an individual that will come alongside me. And I think you'll be very impressed with, with what he'll bring to the table. So I've done, I've, I've reached out, I have mentors and, and friends that have grown up in law enforcement throughout the state. And I've reached out to several sheriffs, one in Greenbrier County, one in Hardy County. They're very, very close to me. And they pledge their support for me. So those, those are two that I would say that are smarter than me and know more than me. So I'm going to lean on them and, and learn, learn the position and, and do, do the best job that I can.
Thank you. What would you consider your, your strengths and your weaknesses?
Well, years ago, I went to a executive command school and they did a, this personality study on leadership. And what I kind of graded out as, and I'm not saying this boastfully, I'm a perfectionist. I like to do things with excellence. And I think that, that's probably a strong point for me. And sometimes it's a weak point for me, if you understand. I, I have high expectations for people that work for me. But I also have grace for individuals that are out here working hard. And I like to call them mistakes of effort that, you know, if, if, if an individual's working hard and they make a mistake of effort, I, I don't mind dealing with that. It's the, it's the purposeful violation, going outside the, the bounds that we all have guardrails and, and things that we, we should stay within. That's, that's the, that's the problem I see. But my, I, I, I'd have to say my, my strong point and weak point is, I, I like to see things done with excellence. And, but I'm also have the ability to give grace when maybe none of us are going to get to that excellent. Well, you, you always strive for it and do the best you can do.
Are you familiar with the civil service code that the sheriff's?
I, I'm somewhat familiar with it. I've been reading up on it. Not as familiar as I'm going to be if I get this appointment, obviously. I understand that it's there, you know, as a protector for their employment. And it's something that I, I look forward to working with the three, I think it's three civil service commissioners, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And it's, it's a system that I don't, I, like I said, I, I was, came up in the state police, we had what was called professional standards and, and how they look, you know, how they looked into complaints and, and disciplinary matters. It's, it's a whole different system. But I have no problem with working with that system and, and how, how it will operate.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Barnhart?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Under the West Virginia Code, the sheriff is more administrative officer than he is a rootin', tootin', gun tootin', shoot 'em up kind of Western guy. What do you feel? Or how do you feel about the future of your other administrative offices? And you already mentioned this, the tax office, the police reserve, animal control and conservatorship and all those kinds of things that the sheriff has to get in that aren't part of rootin', tootin', gun tootin'.
You're, you're definitely looking at guys not a rootin', tootin'. I did that in my younger years. Like I said, I spent the last 18 years of my career in some form of supervision or administrative management. I understand the, that the tax department is, is running very smoothly under Ms. Gooden's leadership. I look forward to working with her, the animal control. You know, you hear stories about, in the media, about how things are going there. I, I, I can work with them and the conservatorships. I understand you have legal representation that handles most of that. So I look forward to learning that. It's something that would be a challenge for me, but I, I accept those challenges and look forward to it.
One thing that your predecessor was, I guess, very good at was getting grant money. He was, God, in here, half, half of our meetings, you know, getting grant money. Do you going to continue that? Or do you, do you find that useful? Or is, is it a burden to you?
Absolutely not. In the state police, we, we often, I personally, I don't write grants and never have.
Well, we, we write the grants for.
But I, but I'm saying, I, I definitely would want to explore any grant that would be beneficial to, to the officers, to, to the efficient running of our department. Anything that's going to be beneficial to the citizens of Berkeley County, I'm for. The gentleman that I will have alongside me is, is well versed in logistics, grant writing, budgets. Like I said, I like smart people around me. But yes, sir, I would, I would definitely do that.
Mr. Boyd?
If you were so selected for this position, what would be your first course of action after selection?
Well, the obvious thing, I've already kind of touched upon, is getting to know my people or our people. I know many in the agency. In my career, I worked with a lot of sheriff's department employees on the task force and, and I knew them. So getting to know my people and, and just starting to understand the, the different roles, identifying, you know, who's doing what and if, if it's as smooth as it could be, or maybe, maybe we'll look at, you know, if there's any changes that need to be made. But I'm not going to go in and just upset the apple cart, so to speak. I want to go in and get a firm understanding of what's going on. I've, I've watched this whole thing from afar. I hear things in the community, but I don't want to prejudge any, anybody or anyone. I, I want to go in and with an understanding that, you know, I'm going to be new to this. And that, a lot of these, the deputies and civilians and people, they don't know me. They may think they do, but they, they, they don't know me. And I, I want them to get to know me. And I want to, I want that relational with, with each and every employee. And I think that's very important.
You said you, you spent many years in, in administration role. So with this next question, do you have much experience with team building, morale building?
In law enforcement, you, you better be able to team build and morale build. It's, it's one of the most unique professions in, in the world because there's a, there's a saying, nobody wants the police until they want the police. And, you know, that's, sounds kind of weird until you really think of it. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm all about team building, morale building. I like to encourage people. I'd also like to hold people accountable. I like to hold myself accountable, number one. I like to set that example. But, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm all about team building. Because if, if you don't have, if you don't have unity within it, excuse me, within any agency, you're just going to be chasing your tail. Because you have to have that unity, that cohesiveness that, that any organization would require. Yes, sir.
Mr. Catlett?
Thank you, Rob, for being here today. I can't tell you how much we appreciate the fact that you applied for this position. I, I've said for many years, the toughest position in Berkeley County is the superintendent. I think the sheriff's number two, I always believe that. My father was a two-term sheriff in the seventies, and your father-in-law was a two-term sheriff in the eighties. And even though the county has changed dramatically since then, one thing that was really important was the relationship with other law enforcement agencies in our community, surrounding communities and counties. And just express to us your relationship with those over the years, how that went.
I've always wanted, see, I started out in Jefferson County. That was, I actually started out and finished in Jefferson County, although it was over seven counties in my final nine years. But one of the things in Jefferson County that just impressed me and, and it made me who I am today is the, Jefferson County has the Sheriff's Department of Ransfield, Charlestown, Harpers Ferry, Shepherdstown. And I had the best relationship with every agency. A lot of times, I'd be working midnights by myself. And I'd go up on the mountain. And I'd turn around, there'd be a Shepherdstown officer over my shoulder. And that's, that's what, that's just the way I see law enforcement. Coming from a task force background, we had a, we had a kind of a saying that when you walked in the task force, you hung your, your, your agency identity at the door. You were, you were there to work together and, and see that the, the job, just the job gets done, whatever that took. We took no possessive interest and say, hey, you know, I'm a trooper and he's a deputy. And, and there's a lot of, like, it should be fun, like, you know, we used to have basketball games, like troopers and deputies and somebody bust their knee and have to get surgery. And, but, you know.
You used to try to get me to referee those games. I refuse to do it.
And, and I apologize for the times that I yelled at you when you didn't call that foul on my son. But, yeah, you know, I hear all the, the things in the community that, you know, maybe this, this guy, I'm not going to work with him because he's this or that. Law enforcement is, is, we all have a particular job to do and, and we should work together. And I'll give you a great example of this. December 17th, we all remember when Abe Bean and Caden Spessert, they, they were in a life or death. The guys literally saved each other's lives. But guess what? Deputy showed up on the scene. A deputy rode with Abe Bean and kept him alive. And I guarantee you that that deputy didn't care what color uniform Abe had on. And vice versa. That's, that's the kind of unity that I want to see in Berkeley County.
That sums up most of the questions?
Well, I'd like, I'd like for him to expound on the relationship between the sheriff's office, prosecuting attorney, magistrates, and county commissions.
You guys are going to be my best friends if I get appointed. I, I have always, it's just, I've always tried to, to work with any agency, whether I agreed with them or not. I can put personal things aside. Heck, I, whether, whatever political party you belong to, I, I want to work with everyone. I have a great relationship with the prosecutor's office. I have the utmost respect. And some of the things that's been said about you guys and the prosecutor's office lately is disgusting. We all need to work together. This is all about Berkeley County. It's not about one individual. It's not about, it's not even about me. The sheriff's department has been around since 1865. There's been a lot of sheriffs come and go. But these guys back here, that's what it's all about. And that's what I want to support. And that's what I, I want to support every agency in the county regardless, like I said, of a, you know, I, I pretty much like everybody. You know, I, I try to be that way, try to get along. Because, and even in, when I was a trooper, if I arrested someone, I try to treat them decent. Because you never know when you're by yourself again and you need somebody to help you. And that guy you arrested, and I had it happen before, they helped me. And they told me, you treated me good. That's what it's all about. So.
Sheriff goes back to 1772.
Is, you sure it's not in 1865?
We were Berkeley County four in 1772.
Well, I know, for West Virginia, but still.
Well, yeah, but sheriff goes back to Virginia.
Yeah.
Creation of the county.
But 1865, if you look, it's, I was, I was looking at a poster. I'm not being argumentative, but whether it was Virginia or West Virginia.
Berkeley County, Virginia.
I'll, I'll, I'll concede to you, sir.
In fact, the first sheriff was Adam Stevens.
Okay.
He's gone now.
Oh, he is?
Yeah.
I thought he was, hey, I thought he had one more term.
No, no, we, we, we didn't let him have it. So. You have any other closing remarks you'd like to?
Again, I, I just, I, I want to thank you all for this opportunity. I'm honored, I'm humbled to be here. And I, through this process, I, I can't tell you how much support I've, I've received from people within the community. And people I haven't talked to in years have called me and, and voiced their support. And that means a lot to me. And if I'm blessed to receive this appointment, I pledge that you all would do my very best to help these gentlemen and ladies make Berkeley County Sheriff's Department the best police agency in the state of West Virginia.
Very good.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much.
Well, I got to ask this. Usually when, when somebody calls me James P., I'm usually in trouble. So is it Robert A. or Rob?
I've been called a lot of stuff. So you call, Rob is what most people, I got people, I went to high school with, still call me Robbie. Some people call me Bob, but I go by Rob pretty much. So.
Well, I go by Jim. So.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Give you a second there and I'll be glad to shake your hand while you're, while you're still on. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Okay. Next applicant is Jeremy Farner. We would welcome you to the. Oh, ten, oh, oh, yeah, we're still good. All right. We're going to take a little break. Okay, Mr. President. Thank you.
Penny, you want to bring us back in? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we're back in session. And next up, we have Jeremy Farner with our interviews. And come on up, Jeremy, and tell us a little bit about yourself, and then we'll go with some questions.
Awesome. Good morning. My name is Jeremy Farner. Currently, I'm employed as a supervisory board of police and courts developer instructor out at the Advanced Training Center in Harpers Ferry, Virginia.
You remember that?
Yes, sir.
Gee, quite the title.
It's... We usually abbreviate it as SBPACDI. I've been with the federal government for 28-plus years. Prior to that, I was a police officer and deputy sheriff in Florida, excuse me. I've worked, obviously, in central west-east Florida. I've worked in Daytona Beach, Belushi County, large touristy-type community as a law enforcement officer. I started my career at 18, 19-years-old. Prior to that, I was an explorer. So if you really want to go back, I've been involved with law enforcement since I was 14 at different levels. I had the opportunity to get hired by the Board Troll. Went to San Diego, California, for my initial tour out there. Eight-and-a-half years there, worked with all kinds of state, local agencies on different task forces and different operations in southwest of the United States. From there, I got the opportunity to transfer back to Tampa, Florida, to be close to home, to my mom who was living in Daytona Beach. So I moved back there. I was in Tampa, Florida, for 11-and-a-half years. While I was there, I did various different activities. We worked highway interdiction mostly for my time that was there. We did smuggling and... We did smuggling interdiction, worked with state and local agencies, developed some great relationships with some agencies down there on the local level. Worked as an asset forfeiture officer, so I was making decisions about seizures. I was the final siding official for federal seizures within the Miami sector area. I had a paralegal staff of one, great guy. Had the opportunity to promote, come up to Harpers Ferry, West Virginia, found a house here in Berkeley County, bought it in 2015. And as soon as my partner and I arrived here in West Virginia, we said, "This is home. This is where we want to retire. This is where we want to be." My time at the Advanced Training Center, I was there for a five-year term, a three-to-five term, four-and-a-half years, I had to find some place to go. Opportunity came to go to Buffalo, New York. I have family in western New York. That's where I was born. My father was up there. So I took the opportunity to go up there as an intelligence supervisor for an intelligence unit. I worked from Grand Island, New York, which is Buffalo, all the way down to Erie, Pennsylvania. Worked with a lot of the agencies up there, developed some great, great partnerships with state and local agencies. Wyoming County Sheriff's Office is one of a great partner agency we had up there. Opportunity came to come back down here to home, so we came back. And my intent is to retire here eventually. I'm still working at the Advanced Training Center. That's kind of my story, my elevator speech, that's kind of my story. I have a strong background in incident command. I currently am one of the few incident command instructors at the Advanced Training Center. And just to kind of tell you a little bit about my story and kind of where I see things and what my policies are, what I, how I operate. Board Patrol has a motto, it's honor first. I live by that. I've done that for over 28 years, honor first. For how I deal with things, I usually follow three Cs: communicate, collaborate, and coordinate. Communication is just what it sounds like. If I don't communicate expectations, I can't hold you accountable. Conversely, if you don't communicate expectations to me, I can't be held accountable. Coordinate, that's internal, working with our internal partners, whether it be within the county, within the agency, wherever it is, we need to work together. Collaboration is outside, state, local partners, whole-of-government approach to problems. How can we solve problems? And well, we're not the only ones carrying the burden. Where can we share and work together? That's what I firmly believe in. That being said, I open up to your questions, gentlemen.
Sure. First question I have is, why do you want to be sheriff? And why should we consider appointing you to this position?
That is a very layered, layered question, sir. So as I said, I started my law enforcement career when I was very young. First agency I worked for is Belushi County Sheriff's Office. I've always had a mystery of working with the sheriff's office, and I've enjoyed my time there immensely. Since coming to West Virginia, this is home. I love the way this community is. And at 28-plus, 30-plus-year career in law enforcement, I want to give something back. I've been giving for 28-plus years. I want to give more back. I want to be accountable more to the community, if that makes sense. I think I have a lot to give to the community and a lot of positives that I bring with me in my perspective to the agency. I don't think the sheriff's office is broken right now. I think there was a leadership issue, and obviously, this council or this commission has taken the steps to correct that. And I just would like to continue on some of those positives that were there and find out how we can work smarter and not harder within the sheriff's office and improve upon that agency and make it that much better. I think it's a good agency. I just think there was a little bit of bad blood in there, and that's been fixed. So that water's under the bridge, time to move forward.
Eddie?
Yes, sir. Very good. Number one, thanks for applying.
Thank you.
And you had the opportunity to listen to the first round of questions.
I did.
And in fairness, most of us will ask you the same questions. That way, everybody gets treated fairly.
Equitably.
So what do you see as your major challenges moving forward? And how will you overcome it?
Major challenge moving forward and how am I going to overcome that? Again, a great question. Major challenge going forward is, I'm the outsider. I'm not local. I'm not a former trooper. I'm not a former deputy. I'm coming into the agency with a fresh set of eyes. I have to learn the intricacies of the sheriff's office, not just the law enforcement side, but the tax side, animal control, the volunteer reserves, I need to understand those better. I think I'm taking good steps to learn as much as I can, but you can only learn so much off the paper. You have to talk to the people. You have to get in there. You have to learn. You have to do the job before you can say you know it. That's going to be the hard part. It's going to take time, 60 to 90 days usually, to learn a new job and to learn a new agency or new organization. And that's probably going to be my biggest challenge, is learning the intricacies. And again, now, a lot of that's going to rely upon trusting and working with the leadership that's currently in place and determining, are they the right people? If not, what can we do to adjust?
Jeremy, what would you consider to be your strengths and your weaknesses?
My strengths and weaknesses? I have a hot temper. I run fast and I run quick, but it burns out. I do have a good memory, usually, depends on what the issue is. I have to learn to control that sometimes, and I have to learn to keep my mouth in check. I am much, much better than I used to be. I used to be a lot shorter of a temper. But I want things to succeed, and I want things to go right. If I see things not going in the right direction, I'm going to step in and I'm going to try to guide them in the right direction, at least for the realm and the area that I can control. Sometimes things are outside of our control. Frustration, that's a big thing I deal with also, because sometimes things are out of our control, and we cannot change the course of something necessarily. We can try to, but sometimes a train's going and you just can't stop it. But that's probably my biggest things are frustration, and sometimes I burn a little bit hot. I've gotten a lot better about it, and I promise not to blow up at anybody, but I may shut a door and yell once or twice. Then I'll go step back out and go, "Hey, how are we doing? Let's go forward."
Yeah, because just, you know, regardless of what goes on, typically, it depends on who you're upset with. You may have to work with that person the next day.
Absolutely. And there are many people that I get upset with on a daily basis. I'm a professional first and foremost. I come to work to do a job. And I may not like an individual personally, but that doesn't mean I'm going to treat them necessarily differently in the workplace. We have to work together, and that's kind of goes back to the coordination and collaboration. We have to work together at all levels of government, for our community and for the citizenry. We have to work together, because if we fail, who are we failing? We're not failing ourselves, we're failing the public.
The Berkeley County Sheriff's Office statute is protected by civil service code.
Yes, sir.
Are you familiar with that?
Yes, I have read through the current, the West Virginia chapter seven. I have not completely read through that, but the Berkeley County Deputy Sheriff's Association, I've read through that document, and I'm pretty familiar with that.
Mr. Barnhart?
Well, you got to gift a gab, I'll give you that.
Sometimes it comes in handy, sometimes...
Well, it should, and the sheriff is an administrative officer by code.
Yes, sir.
You know, and you heard this all before, you know, it's not a root-and-toot and gun-totin...
Little piece of it is.
Well, yes, but you're primarily an administrative officer. And you've already mentioned it, but of course, we have to ask you the same question, so I ask you the question. What do you feel is the future of the tax office, police reserve, animal control, conservatorship, and all those administrative jobs? And of course, the police aspect too, is you're the boss. You're not the leading guy out there with the gun. You're the...
You are the...
So expound on that.
You are, as I was talking to the chief, you are the figurehead.
Yeah.
You're the face of the agency. When something goes wrong, you're the one that's going to be held accountable. So to answer your question, is my responsibility to my public, or to the public, is to ensure that we have chiefs and individuals in charge over those offices. First off, have a good communication with them, ensure that there are good open-door policy. I like to be told, "Hey, is there something that could be a problem? Is there something that might have gone a little awry? Please tell me about things, so when someone comes to me with it as a problem, at least I know it's coming and I'm not getting hit or blindsided by it. Give me a heads up, let me know if something's coming." Have good leadership in those positions. Again, I'm not the subject matter expert on law enforcement. I may have experience, but I am not, I don't know Berkeley County Sheriff's law enforcement side, I don't know the tax side, I don't know the animal control side, and I don't know conservatorship, and I don't know the, I left that one, oh, volunteer reserves. I don't know those in and out yet. So we need to make sure that we have good people in those positions, leading those. And if they see a problem, they need to know they can come to me with that problem before it becomes too big of a problem. And we can address it and deal with it, whether it's coming to the commission, whether it's going to the community, whether it's dealing with a personnel issue, so be it.
Well, how are you, and I didn't ask this before, but are you good at dealing with the public to expound on the services that the sheriff department offers and all that kind of stuff, public speaking?
I'm not a good public speaker at all.
Well, you're doing fine.
I'm just curious. I am. I do, I'm an instructor. I do teach. I'm comfortable in front of groups. There will be times where we have to talk to people, we have to talk to groups. They're not going to be our friends.
But you have to be a salesman.
But you have to be a salesman. You have to touch on the high points. You have to be able to sell the high points and sell the good points. There are going to be dark sides. There's going to be dark parts. Our job is to bring those out into the light and deal with those. Make those hard decisions as an administrator and as a head of an agency. You have to make those hard decisions. And sometimes, it's going to be painful and it's going to hurt, and you have to admit when something went wrong. You have to have that ability to humbly go before the public and tell them, "We made a mistake, whatever it was, but here's what we're doing to fix this and prevent this from happening again."
So you're good with the media?
I can be. I worked public information when I was in San Diego. I'd never had any problems with the media out there. Again, my media experience was usually more towards the, they came to us for information instead of us going to them. So it usually wasn't adversarial. But adversarial, it would be just like speaking to anybody, member of the public, the media is the same thing. You just, you treat them like a human being, you answer a question honestly and directly, and sometimes you're going to say things that are going to hurt us. It's not going to make us look good. That's part of the job. Law enforcement, we have split second. Deputies on the road have a split second to make a decision that a jury of 12 can deliberate for six months, you know? And it's knowing and understanding and explaining that, sometimes it's hard to do. I've had to do it in different circumstances throughout my career. I've had to have bad conversations with people. People want items back, or agents or deputies or law enforcement took an enforcement action. And as a supervisor, you have to come and explain to them, "Well, that's not the way it's going to go. This is the way it's going to happen," or "This is the way it works." You've had to take citizens' complaints about someone doing something they're not supposed to do. Again, if somebody does something wrong, they have to be held accountable, but you can only hold people accountable if you communicate expectations to them within the agency. Answer your question, sir.
Mr. Boye?
All right. So my question, what would be your first course of action if selected for this position?
My first course of action, if selected for this position, would be to learn. Talk to the agency, talk to the agency, talk to the deputies, talk to the command staff, get to know what's going on at the agency. Learn the ins and outs. Talk to the tax office, talk to animal control, find out what their issues are. The first 60 to 90 days are going to be learning. And at that point in time, we can start addressing and looking at things differently, and how can we work smarter and not harder? And basically, that's my first thing to do, probably be go out and have lunch, but if you want to be blunt. But just learn, learn the job. Learn what's happening within the department, and how can it be improved? And look at, start making notes and saying, "Hey, maybe we can do a little better on this, maybe we can do a little better on that." I would expect one-on-one time with the chiefs throughout the office of learning what their issues are, hearing and listening to what they have to say. How can we work better? What can we improve? What's not working? What's working really well? How can we do it better? That would be my first.
Okay. And my other question, with all your experience in places you've been, do you have any team building or outbuilding experience?
Yes. I, many, many years ago, I was, one of my really, really good friends who is, works for another agency now, we actually taught team building. Team building comes down to some basic, basic fundamentals. It's breaking down barriers, talking to people, and getting that buy-in. You know, we're not a team right now, but six months from now, we may be a very cohesive team. It's getting to know the people that work with you and work for you, and so on and so forth. Ultimately, as a sheriff, you're the leader. You're the administrator, so you, but you still have to be part of that team. So you have to break down those barriers. You have to kind of be one of the guys. So you have to break down those barriers and communicate. I've always taken my teams that I have throughout my career, when I've been in a leadership role and in a leadership role, I always try to do things as much as I would like to have them done to me. I try to treat them as they would treat me, because that's just a common courtesy of dealing with people. I always took my team to lunch, not promising the sheriff's office lunch or anything, but when I was running small teams, I would get together, we would have our meetings over lunch, we would have discourses over lunch, because a lot of times, people will communicate things they won't necessarily in a formal meeting. Gives you the opportunity to get to know the person and not just the position. And that's something I firmly believe in, is we have to get to know the individuals in different positions. Because if they're supporting you and they're helping you succeed, that's important. You have to know that you can rely on and trust the people that are working with you and working for you. So yeah, I have some experience in team building. I think I do bring a strong background in that to this. And again, sometimes it's just learning the eccentricities of that office and that agency and those people, and just learning who they are. We're not always going to see eye to eye. We're not always going to agree, but sometimes we can just agree to disagree.
Mr. Gallinari?
First of all, thank you for applying, and thank you for appearing today and getting interviewed. I appreciate it very much. Your resume was very impressive, very impressive. I know you're not from this area, so you haven't had a chance to work with other agencies here, but your opening remarks talked about how important it was to work with other agencies. And I assume that you want to expound on that, because you were with the city police, with state police, with Jefferson, Wood County, next door.
Yeah. I'd love to expound upon that. And again, thank you for your words. It's my honor and my pleasure, and I'm humbled to be before the commission, so I've actually made it to this point. Either way, I appreciate the opportunity to at least convey my thoughts and apply for the position. Team, not team building, but partnerships are very, very important. No one law enforcement agency can solve all the problems in the community. We have to look at a whole-of-government approach, whether it be working with our state and local partners. Typically, in my profession and in my experience, I've always worked at mid-level management and creating those partnerships. Obviously, as a sheriff, you're working at a very different level. You're working as an agency administrator. Creating those partnerships are very important. A good example that comes to mind immediately is when I was in western New York recently, in the past, within the past five years, we had a local sheriff's office up there that had a traffic stop, a simple traffic stop, didn't think anything of it. Young individual had some currency, bulk currency in their vehicle, and because of the relationship we had started to build with that sheriff's office, they reached out to my office and said, "Hey, we got something weird. Do you want to look at this?" And because of that, we developed an organized crime drug pass force case, an OCSDEF case off of that stop that turned into an investigation tied all the way back to cartels in Mexico. Unfortunately, some of the leads ran out, and we didn't bring that full case to fruition, but that wasn't because of anything, anybody did it incorrectly. But those are the kind, that's a great example of working with someone you wouldn't normally work with. It wasn't an immediate border agency, it was an inland, more interior, and that wouldn't be a normal relationship you would think of for us as when I was a board of police to work on that. When I was in Florida, we worked routinely with state and local agencies. As simple as you see Florida Highway Patrol or a local state law enforcement officer on the side of the road, rolling up behind him and just being an extra set of eyes. Sometimes that's what it takes, those relationships, those partnerships built on the side of the road of talking to somebody. Working with other agencies, whole-of-government, I know that some good things have come out in the past couple of years. The second annual county came together this past year of bringing all county agencies into one thing. Those are the kind of things that need to continue to happen, if not yearly or annually, more often. It's so important to bring partners in, because again, one agency, one person cannot do everything. We have to have partners, we have to work together, because if we don't, it's not, we're not going to, we're not going to succeed. We'll succeed a little bit, but we're not going to succeed as much as we could if we come together. Plus, a joy shared is twice the joy. If we all succeed, if one succeeds, we all succeed. Answer your question, sir?
Yes, sir.
Well, expound prosecuting attorney, magistrates, county commission?
I don't have a lot of...
I asked the other guy this question.
No, 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 I understand. So I can equate that to some of my experiences of prosecuting attorneys. We have the US Attorney, I have dealt with the US Attorney's Office. I've been involved in over 50... Office. I've been involved in over 50, probably 100-plus criminal investigations. Everything from the beginning, cradle to grave of those investigations. You have to have a strong working relationship, a good communication of getting the information needed over for prosecution. That is their job is to prosecute the cases. Our job as law enforcement to supply the intelligence and the information for them to prosecute that case. There has to be a good working relationship, period. For the county commission, I think you guys are going to be my new best friends. We'll get to know each other well. You guys kind of guide and direct and help with budget. And if I make you mad or if the sheriff makes you mad, we're not getting the budget to an extent. So it's very important for us to have a positive working relationship. Does it mean we're going to agree on everything? Absolutely not. But we'll be professional and always put the citizens of Berkeley County first. That's all I would ask. And you had one other?
No, that was it.
Okay. Magistrate.
Magistrate.
Court. Working with the courts, yeah. You have to, just like, just like, just like working with the attorney, you have to work with courts. You have to understand that every judge has their thing that they like to see. You kind of know what that is. You got to learn it and you got to make sure that that's there. I've been in magistrate courts. I've been in circuit courts at the federal level, state level. Every judge I have encountered is a little particular about what they want. They want certain things written certain ways. You kind of got to learn that and make sure that your team knows, hey, don't forget with this person, we got to do this. Not change the facts or change anything, but you have to change your message a little to suit what that individual's requirements are.
I'd say it's a two-way street, but really it isn't.
You're 100% right. You're 100% right, sir. You would like to say it's a two-way street, but--
Yeah. Hi.
All righty. That sums it up. Do you have any closing remarks or anything?
As I said when I, a little bit ago, I appreciate the opportunity. This is, this means a lot to me. It's a natural progression in my career, I think. Timing's not exactly where I want it, but I will take it when I get it. Yeah, if there's absolutely anything, either regardless of the commission's decision, if there's absolutely anything that I can do to be of any assistance, please don't hesitate to reach out. And I hope for that, I appreciate your time, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
My pleasure. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Whitaker, pleasure.
Yes. Mr. Whitaker was my dad.
Thanks, sir.
My name's Jim.
Okay.
You'll find we're, not that we're always this formal, but we're usually on a person named basis. We kid around up here a lot, so.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. I, I believe in a happy office. I believe in a happy, high-energy office. Everyone working together, smiles on people's faces. It tends to make the bad things a little easier to digest. But I go by Jeremy. You're welcome to call me that.
Okay. Thank you.
I look forward to hearing from you either way. I do appreciate your time, gentlemen.
All right. Thank you, Jeremy.
Have a safe day.
You too, Peter. My pleasure.
Scott, we're a little bit early, so we're going to take a break and then we'll come back in session. Okay.
And we're welcoming you here.
Thank you. If I may, I'm going to pass out. I don't know if you have it.
Don't pass out. You're going to hand us out?
I'm agreeing with you on that. I'll hand you, you may have it, but figured I'd hand it to you.
I figured I could cut up with you, Scott.
Oh, absolutely. You've got to have a good time.
Didn't know your first name was David.
Well, you can blame my mother for that. God rest her soul, but you can blame her for naming me David Scott, but going by Scott. So if you call me David, I'm probably going to look around the room and go, who are you talking to?
Well, I'm going to agree with you because usually when somebody said James P., I was in trouble.
Yeah, well, David Scott, I've had, got the same thing.
All righty, Scott. You've heard the questions before, some of them. Why do you want to be sheriff? And why do you consider, or why should we consider appointing you to the position?
Well, first of all, thank you from the bottom of my heart. I'm humbled. I appreciate being in the top three. I know you all have a hard decision to make. Everybody brings something to the table. My roots, as I was said earlier, started early on in my life with my grandfather, Pete Downey. Was a constable, was a chief deputy with the Burke County Sheriff's Office. He went on to be a county commissioner. He got me involved in civil service, or community service, serving this community. And it's like firefighters and all, once you get the fever, you can't get rid of it. You know, thin blue line, thin red line, gray line, green line, whatever it is. I've dedicated almost four decades of my life to law enforcement and to this county. It's who I am. It's what I want to do. When I saw that, I said, I can't, I ran for sheriff in 2016, though it wasn't successful. But when you have eight candidates in the mix, you know, if you all have run for the office, you know how it is. Then I was going to be Mike Lang's chief deputy when he ran. It's who I am, it's a lifestyle. I mean, you can ask my wife in the back of the room, we go into, as a lifestyle, we go into a restaurant, first thing she's asking, where are you sitting? Because I cannot sit, a police officer cannot sit with their back to the door. They have to see who's coming through that door. Because in June of this past year, we lost a good trooper. And to sit through that, sorry, it's tough. It was a friend. And I don't ever want to see that again. That's a challenge that we have to fight, day in and day out, filling positions, training them. And I think that I'm going to bring that to the table. I've spent 31 years at the Burke County Sheriff's Office and retired as a captain there. And the only reason I retired is because the law said I can't run for sheriff unless I retire, or quit, one or the other, or I'd probably still be there. So I want to do it because I want to help everyone. You've got so many good people there. But when I have an officer come to me in the Judicial Center, as you know, is my present employment, is a deputy marshal, and tell me there's a trust issue, or this or that, I think I can help build that back, the trust and the loyalty and integrity back to where we're all working together. I remember before I retired, you guys were forbidden for us to ever come over and talk to you all. I was ordered one time that I could not come over and talk to you all. Is that a good thing? I bring to the table, and why I want to be the sheriff, is it's an election year, I get it. He knows who's going to be the next sheriff. But you have a very low transition with me, a very low learning curve. I've been there and done that. I've been from a deputy all the way to the captain. I've done budgets. I know civil service, animal patrol, courts. I do, I know it all. And that's why I want to be your next sheriff, at least for this appointment.
Eddie?
Good morning, Captain. Thank you for applying.
Thank you, sir, for everything you guys do.
We welcome you here today.
Thank you.
And Kevin, what do you see as the major challenges moving forward? And how would you think you will overcome it?
I think the major hurdle right now, I mean, other than making sure we're all working together, is getting police officers to apply to these positions. When I came, and there was maybe one position open, and 50 people applied. Now you can have 15 positions open, and 10 people apply. You can't find enough. And then, after all the process, if you can get a couple out of those 10 that applied that can pass all the background and the civil service requirements, you're lucky. But working together as well, the communication between everyone, to stay on the same page, and to do the best you can to do this job, and making sure that every officer, every employee goes home safely that next, that night, that shift that they're in when it ends.
What do you consider to be your strength and your weaknesses?
I think my strength is I get along with everyone. I can work with everyone. You know, state police, my wife's a 40-year employee with West Virginia State Police. There's, I don't think there's anybody that's working in this area right now she doesn't know because she's working at headquarters here, down here. I can work with everyone. My strength is communicating, being able to listen, understand. My weakness, maybe I didn't have that sense of communication open in the past. And I want to make sure that I can work on that.
And of course, from your background, this question is a little bit, but I will ask it because I've asked it in a fair way. Everybody's the same question. Are you familiar with the deputy sheriff's civil service?
Absolutely. You've got to have the civil service. There's always, I mean, it's, I'm sure the rules are like a bible, you know, or a thing, you know, code that you have to stay up with any laws, any case law that comes across that you need to change accordingly. But it's there to make sure that their jobs are safe. You don't ever want, like when I was an officer, Frederick County, Virginia, they didn't have civil service, and you always heard when there was an election, whoever the new sheriff was, there was a whole bunch of cruisers sitting in front of their sheriff's office because there were people being fired, you know, or they quit because of it. We can't afford that. These people, you know, we have to follow, there's a process that you must follow to protect them. You, you know, you have someone comes in that can, has a grudge, or, you know, or wants, doesn't like somebody, you don't want them, I mean, everybody else is an at-will employee. You don't want an officer as an at-will employee. They're such an asset. You spent, you put too much into that, from all the way to getting them hired, to the academy, and all that you have to pay for the equipment to put them on the street, you can't afford to let them go just at a whim. You want to keep and reinforce and be positive with them and do the best they can. And civil service is one of the ways to help them out. You know, you have the promotion process, the disciplinary process, and it's there for a reason. Due process.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Bernhardt?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. As you're very, as you know better than all of us, the sheriff is an administrative officer. He's in charge of everything, responsible for everything. How do you, what do you feel is the future of your tax office, animal control, police reserve, conservatorship, all the other things that the sheriff does besides rootin', tootin', gun stuff?
Well, first of all, the sheriff's office is number one responsibilities to the court. I believe that's what the code says. But you take all of that, and you have to make sure, we're in the 21st century, and you have to make sure everything, everyone is working towards that, improving whatever we can, making it easier for this tax office, making sure that, you know, if there's something we can do better, we'll do it better. Law enforcement, same way. Things change. We want to make sure they go home safely. And we're going to work together with all of it. I've worked with animal patrol. Randy Smith, you all had it, and I say you as the county commissioners back in the day had animal patrol. Randy Smith took that back and put me over it. And animal patrol does a lot of police work, if you look at it. They write tickets, they answer calls. What kind of training do they have? They don't go to 16 weeks at Institute West Virginia, at the West Virginia State Police Academy. One of the things I tried to do when I was there is improve their, you know, send someone there, have a prosecutor, whoever, talk to them, hey, if I'm going to prosecute this case, how am I going to make, I need you to write a complaint for a warrant that makes sense, the who, what, when, where, why, and how of it. That's what you want to do, you know? So you work with everyone. How do we boost them up positive, protect that asset, and protect the number one thing we do here, the citizens of Berkeley County?
What about police reserve?
Police reserves? Oh my, you can't, you can't say enough about somebody who wants to volunteer their time. Make sure they have the training because, you know, you're doing a uniform, I don't care what it is. And you walk into a 7-Eleven or sheet store or rock store, you don't know what you're walking into. And if there's a bad guy in there, they don't know what that uniform says. They're not going to look and go, oh, that's only a reserve. That's a uniform. And to them, that's, you know, a bad guy's not going to care. So you want to make sure they're on the same page as anybody else doing law enforcement. So you want to make sure they're on the same page as anybody else doing law enforcement. They're a wonderful asset. Let them work traffic control on a wreck, it frees up a deputy back on the road, you know. Making sure that we find ways, unless you all have an endless amount of money, to do the best job we can with what we have. And one of the things I have to thank you on is I'm a believer, I did it before. This transportation officer that, or unit that you have puts officers back on the streets faster, and that's a good thing.
What about the tax office?
Tax office? You know, you've got some people back here in the back who've done it for quite a while. And probably my weakness, kind of coming back to the question, is I'm gonna have to ask Barb and them three back there, I'm not real good on the conservatorship, so they're gonna have to teach me about that. But they need all the support they can get. They don't collect taxes, we don't get paid. I mean, bottom line. So, you know, working with them, they're gonna know better than me what is needed, how do we stay in the 21st century and head towards the 22nd century down the road?
Thank you. Mr. Boyd?
Yes, sir. Staying on track with the same questions. What would be your first line of action if selected for the position?
Well, first of all, since I have no real learning curve, other than maybe somebody I don't know, I think unless somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but April 19th, you need a budget?
January 31st.
Well, but, but you, but.
January 31st.
Okay, January 31st. Well, it's, it's the 16th of January right now, and I know they're working on it, but I would say that's the probably, I mean, if we have to get a budget in, it's gonna be a tight window. And, you know, looking at it for myself, make sure that, you know, I understand, is there any needs that I think that the department need, and evaluate and talk and listen to everyone to do that. Retaining people and making sure that we have the right people on the road, because no matter what, the biggest thing is, is how do we protect Berkeley County's citizens the best that we can? That's what we need to do.
In your history with the department and whatnot, do you have any team building, morale building experience?
Well, I just touched on it earlier, and I'm gonna touch on it again, yes. I mean, when you have animal patrol that don't know how to do a complaint for a warrant, and you help them, teach them how to write one, so they can get warrants, they go to court, so you can get a conviction, and you teach them, and you, it helps them, being positive, say, hey, I did a pretty good job today, showing them that you care. Because a lot of times, animal patrol is, people forget about them, you know. So you have to work with everyone to show that you're there for them, you're not there to beat them down, but build them up in any way, shape, or form. Presently, I'm an adjunct professor at Blue Ridge, teaching criminal investigation. So I can, you know, I'm teaching kids who are going into this field of some, whether it's uniform, or probation, or whatever, working on taking that and teaching people what is needed, your past experience.
Thank you. Mr. Catler?
Thank you for applying, and thank you for being here today.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
I just want to ask about your relationship in the past and currently with all the other law enforcement agencies in the area, in the county. How important do you think that is to have a great line of communication?
You have to have a great line of communication. If you don't, you know, I read a study, and it's been so many years ago, it's hard to tell what it is now. The FBI said that you need two and a half people, officers per 1,000 citizens to do it right. That put us, what, over 200 officers? Let's be realistic, you all can't, and this county can't afford that. So what do you have to do? You have to look for different ways of doing it. Well, what's the best way is having a good relationship and having mutual agreement and mutual aid with other agencies. And I do have that. Again, my wife's a 40-year member of the state police, and I have a very good relationship with them. I've always had a relationship with the city police. I know George Shortwood isn't there anymore, but I'm sure that, I know their president chief, and I'm sure that we will always get along fine with that. I was taught that a long time ago, work well together. You know, my grandfather taught me that, you know, handshake, and if you give your word, you better stay to it.
Mr. Barnhart was gonna follow up with you about your relationship with prosecuting attorney's office and magistrates, and I'll take that from him.
Well, that's fine. Let's face it, again, the prosecutor is the number one head law enforcement officer of Berkeley County. Or, gosh, I'm going back, I'm thinking when my mom worked for O'Weller. Ms. Delagati is the, right, you have to have that relationship. You have to have that open communication. If you don't, you're gonna fail. She's the one who gets to, she or whoever, or whoever gets it next, are the ones who decide if your case is going to trial, are you getting a warrant for this person. I certainly wouldn't want something falling through the crap, cracks, because you don't know, you know, you didn't do your job right, you didn't have a good line of communication, or they didn't trust you, or your integrity wasn't called into question. Magistrates, the deputy marshal, I know them all. I've worked probably in, the only courtroom I haven't worked in yet is Family Judge Matchett's courtroom. I haven't worked in her courtroom yet, but I've worked in every other courtroom. I'm assigned to Circuit Judge Redding's court is my normal duty assignment. I know magistrates, working with them, keeping, was there, I think I counted the other night, you can have up to 16 elected officials in that building at one time. It's a responsibility that I take seriously, as well as I would take this job as sheriff seriously, to make sure that we're all working on the same page. We won't, you know, we won't get everything we want, but we'll do it as adults and do it correctly, in the best we can.
What about your relationship with us?
I hope I have a good relationship.
Why do you do?
I mean, and it would be. I've known pretty much most of you a good, long time. I mean, I may have known Steve longer, only because my grandfather worked for Calvin Bear, and then worked for a brief period with his dad, Lyle Catlick, as sheriff. So, again, that's where that hook, line, and sinker came in, in law enforcement and being in this public view. It, you have to work well together. You're all the one to hold golden ticket. You all got the budget and the money, you know, so we gotta work well together, you know, because human nature is, if you make somebody mad, maybe you don't get what you really wanted to get, why don't we just be adults about it? I'm 60, I'll be 65 years old this year. You know, I don't have time to have grudges or be mad at people, you know. Again, you all have a big job to do when it comes to the budgets. You'd like to have an endless amount of money, you don't have it, but you want to do the best you can, and the relationship we would have, Gary On, is if I need something, if you appoint me to this position, is when I ask for it, you'll know why. You know, I'll bring it over and tell you, here's, you know, we will, because I'll have a, I have a great staff, whether it's tax office, sheriff's office, animal patrol, wherever, we will work together, do the best we can for you all and for this community. The number one thing is serving the citizens of Berkeley County. That's what it all comes down to.
Okay. Anybody else? Have any other closing remarks or anything, Scott?
Let me put my glasses on. I have some notes here, I don't know if I, I think I've touched on most of them. But, you know, I took this because I believe in it. I could easily, I work nine to five, Monday through Friday, weekends off, evenings off, holidays off, and I'm saying, no, I don't want that. I'll take the 24/7, 365. I want to be available, because I believe in this community. I've lived here. I've lived in this community since you used to be able to leave the key out and leave your doors open. Wish we could do that again. But I'm here because I love this job. I love being a police officer. I always have. I left, retired, didn't win a sheriff, and thank goodness, Virginia Sign was willing to hire me for a brief period, but I had that calling come back, put that uniform back on, so now I'm a deputy marshal. You know, great bunch of people there to protect that building, when we have over 117,700 people walk through that door last year. Because we're there for this community, for the people, to make sure the taxpayers, the citizens of Berkeley County are safe, and all the tourists that come through this area with the 81 going down there, you have so many people and influx of people, you want to make sure, staying up with it, doing the best job we can with what we have. Again, I know bids, I've done bids, grants, civil service, not much I haven't done in my 31 years over there, and I hope to do it again. But I certainly appreciate your time. I'm humbled, it's my faith, my family, this community, means a lot to me. My wonderful wife of almost 35 years come June, how she's put up with me, I'm not real sure, but she has.
She's not the one that's prompting you to do the 24/7, is she?
No, absolutely not.
I got a big smile from her back there.
But.
But I just had to ask.
No, I'm all in. I've always been all in. You know, I wouldn't have run for sheriff if I wasn't, I could have stayed, and stayed as captain, and whatever. But after five, working for five sheriffs, I thought, well, let me give it a shot. I don't think I could do any worse than some of them did. Maybe I can do better. So.
We gotta chuckle.
Okay. But I do, I am humbled, I appreciate your time, being one of the top three, and I hope that, again, there's no real learning curve with me. We can hit the ground running, and, when you say January what?
I got a second, I'm not supposed to say that.
Okay, sorry, sorry. But anyway, but the point being is, I want to be your sheriff. Lifelong resident, don't plan on going anywhere. And I thank you. Mr. Something Else?
Nothing else? Well, Scott, I'm gonna stand up here.
Thanks, Scott.
I forgot your mom worked for O'Weller, and my dad was good friends with you.
Yes. Again, another place how I got sucked into this.
All righty, well, that concludes our interviews for the, for this position, our interim position. Gentlemen, we have a task in front of us. We will make no decisions today, that's of course, but we will, we'll have an executive session on Thursday, we'll meet, discuss, and we will come out on Thursday with a decision. Anything else before the, for this panel today? Mr. Barnhart?
Mr. President, I wish to thank all the candidates and all the people who came to watch the candidates, and I move to recess.
We are in recess. Thank you all.